What's that? All right. Thank you. All right, we won't recite the pledge again, so I think we're all good there. But I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the news media 24 hours prior to the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the leadership statement. We're going to say the City of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Thank you. Next item is the council workshop. We did have one on Monday. We did interview the potential candidates for the council seat. That is available online. I won't read all that to you for obvious reasons. And then we do have a mayoral proclamation. This is for the 2025 Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every child deserves a safe, nurturing, and loving environment to thrive and reach their full potential, whereas child abuse and neglect are serious societal problems that have devastating consequences for individuals, families, and communities. Whereas April is designated as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness, promote prevention, and support families in need. And whereas the community of Hampton, Iowa is committed to recreating a safe and supportive environment for all children, and whereas a collaborative effort involving families, community organizations, schools, faith-based institutions, and local government is essential to effectively prevent child abuse and neglect. Therefore, now therefore, I, Steve Bertschel, Mayor of Hampton, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Hampton, Iowa. I also urge all citizens to recognize the importance of child safety and well-being. Be vigilant and report any suspected cases of child abuse and neglect to the appropriate authorities. Be supporting local organizations and initiatives that promote child abuse prevention and intervention. Work together to create a community where all children are safe, loved, and supported. So thank us or join us to Hampton in making Hampton, Iowa, a place where kids' children can thrive. So, I hear on the 27th day of March 2025, we do proclaim this as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. And moving on to public comment. Does anybody have any public comment this evening that we'd like to share?
Thank you, counsel.
All right.
My name's Don Mornicki. I purchased Dave and Cheryl Becker's property along Highway 65 and 140th Street. We are giving you an update. We've had a lot of issues not getting things done. We had a well to cap. We had Mid-American was a huge issue, getting them to close the water and the gas. Then my contractor had a death in the family. His sister-in-law passed, so there's been a lot of obstacles along the way, but we have an excavator sitting in the driveway. Weather hasn't been especially on our side. We've had, he doesn't really want to do it until it's a quiet weather because don't want insulation all over blowing through town and stuff. So we are definitely pushing forward to get it torn down and get it cleaned up, and I just wanted to make the, let the council know where we were at on it.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Really appreciate you doing that and coming and giving us an update. All right, thank you.
I did notice you had someone there scrapping stuff out.
Yes.
So I figured the time is coming soon. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment tonight?
Excuse me, I'm Marilyn Moser, and I'll be brief. I'm here to support, to voice my support for Jean Fay to be appointed to the vacant city council seat. I know Jean from Franklin General Hospital, where she's always checked me or a family member in, in a friendly, positive, professional manner. I was unable to attend the interview with the candidates on Monday evening, but I did watch the YouTube video in its entirety. I thought Jean answered the questions in a thoughtful way, and I feel that she has the maturity and focus to lead Hampton forward.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. Okay, one of you.
Dick Lukensmeyer spent 12 years sitting in chairs where you guys are sitting, and the past two years been in the supervisor's seat as the representative for the City of Hampton. I have to say that I did listen, as you did. I wasn't able to be here Monday, but I did listen to the interviews in their entirety, and I thought all four candidates did a very good job. They brought up very good points, and I would just like to express my support for Bill Holstrom. And the reason for that would be his experience in dealing with the public in a positive and a negative way, and I think he understands finances. And I know right now from the supervisor's seat that I sit in, and you guys are aware of this also, the state is not treating our rural communities kindly. So whoever sits in that chair needs to understand finances. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Stock, and I would like to thank the council for hosting the Ward Three applicants interview as a public meeting. The interview was well-run and allowed Ward Three residents like me to learn about all four applicants. I understand that due to the sudden vacancy, the council will appoint a person to serve the councillor for Ward Three until the term ends in November. Since there's no election in which I can vote today, I'm taking this opportunity to provide my input to the council. During the interviews, each candidate talked about the importance of drawing young families to Hampton. Who better to know what young families want than someone who has a young family, like Crystal? The perspective of a young parent, especially a young mother, has not been represented on the council for quite some time, and this is a great opportunity to add it. Another part of the interviews that caught my attention was when Crystal said she spent parts of several weekend days door-knocking in her neighborhood, Glendale Park Drive, and the next neighborhood, Windsor Boulevard. To me, investing that kind of time and energy before even having the role of city councillor was a green flag. That means it's a good thing. Being visible in the community is a great way to get feedback as a councillor. Jean's role in registration at the Franklin Medical Center is one that keeps her visible to a wide variety of folks. Also, I appreciate that during her interview introduction, Jean mentioned that she had hoped to see a Latino member of the community apply to fill the Ward Three vacancy. After the council's rocky start to 2025, I appreciated that perspective. I believe that a representative body like this works best when its members most closely reflect the group that it represents. Having another woman as a councillor would bring the city council closer to reflecting the population demographics of Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any comment tonight? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you all for your input. We will move on. Next item is a public hearing. We don't have one on this session. We took care of that. Oath business, we have none. New business, we will appoint a Ward Three council member tonight. So, Mr. Dunn, did you have some information?
No, I guess it was, the interviews were conducted, and then I will just leave it up to the mayor, how you want to proceed.
All right. So I guess at this point, we've all interviewed. Did you have some input or no?
I was just twitching.
So we've all seen the scene and heard the interviews, the input from the public. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to appoint one of the candidates.
I make a motion to appoint Bill Holstrom.
Okay. We got a motion by Mr. Lamos to appoint Bill Holstrom. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Mr. Hodge. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Nay.
Ms. Greifey?
Nay.
All right. With a vote of three to two, that appointment does pass. So, Mr. Holstrom will be our Ward Three councillor.
Bill, can you come up and take the oath of office, and then you'll have a seat there?
I, Bill Holstrom.
I, Bill Holstrom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Is to charge all the duties of the office of city council member in Hampton.
Is to charge all the duties of the office of city council member in Hampton.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a seat, Bill. Congratulations. Welcome.
Congratulations.
If you have any trouble, just let me know.
Okay.
All right. I did want to take a moment just to thank the rest of the people that applied for the position. Unfortunately, we can only do one at this point, so, but thank you. All right, next item. We got to need to consider the pay estimate number six to cancel Hinkle Construction in the amount of $813,152.50. Do we have Mike Shoup, I believe, on Zoom tonight?
That's correct. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. It wouldn't hurt if you could speak up just a tad.
Yep.
Okay. My name's Mike Shoup. I'm with Beaster and Kim, and I have been working with Jason on this water treatment plant for the City of Hampton. And for the past couple of months, the city's been, I'm sorry, the contractor has been working on the filter tank. They set that tank, they installed the media, they've been working on the face piping and the valves to get the tank plumbed up and piped. They've installed a new control panel, excuse me, and they've also ran some electrical conduit. That's kind of what they've done so far for this pay application. It is a two-month pay application, and it's a big one. It puts them at about 73% complete on the project. I guess moving forward to, in about 14 weeks, they think they'll have that new filter online up and running, and then after that, they will begin working on the other tanks, one at a time, and that could take a little bit. They'll install some valves, take some measurements, order pipe, install some pipe, install some valves, and take some measurements, and order pipe again, until they get it all completed. So that's kind of where things are at there. Is there any questions at all?
Have you had any other issues with the supply chain?
No, I'm not aware of any other issues with the supply chain. We did review a pump here, the replacement pumps recently, so that's in progress, and hopefully that arrives soon.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Shoup? Not hearing any. Thank you so much for your input. At this appointment, I would, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the pay estimate number six to Hinkle Construction in the amount of $813,152.50.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ms. Greifey.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shoup, for your input as well.
Thank you.
And just like that, Bill spends $813,000.
He said I could spend all the money I wanted.
Okay, all right.
Unlimited pockets.
There you go. Well, we got another, we got another check that's right yet tonight, too. All right. Next item, we got to consider the final draft of the fiscal year 26 budget, and set a public hearing for April 24, 2025. Mr. Dunn?
So, thank you, mayor. The blue pages in your packet, Bill, are you able to scroll up to find the blue pages? On the finger pad? I think he only has one tab. Yep. Okay, so just to summarize, this is a culmination of the budget that we put together, and this is the state forms that they go on. Up till now, what you've been working with is just the in-house accounting forms. They've been transposed onto the state forms, and this is the format in which we will submit it to the state. As you'll notice on that front page, is the certification of taxes page. That mirrors what we just talked about in the property tax levy, where the levy at the bottom right, in the far right column, C, on the bottom line, $15.91 is the proposed levy. And I'm not going to go through this line by line, but this is what we'll submit to the state. So what we have to do is set a date for a public hearing on this budget. And so we're proposing to set the hearing for April 24, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers, and authorize city staff to publish notice in the April 9, 2025 edition of the Hampton Chronicle. Are there any questions?
How often does that have to be published?
Just, just once. Yep.
Hearing any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the final draft and everything that City Manager Dunn just said.
Also moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Davies. Second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is approval of claims as submitted by the staff. So I would entertain a motion to approve claims as submitted by staff in the amount
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hodge. Second by Mr. Lamos.
I would just make a note that that's a large number, and that $813,152.00 number for Hinkle Construction pay request is included in that. So that's, no, we're not paying them double. That's included in that number, so, thank you.
Mr. Lamos?
Yeah, I was looking through the claims, and staff goes to Kerquit for training. Do they go, stay overnight, or do they?
Yeah, yes. If it's a multi-day training, then they do stay overnight, and we cover those expenses. Yeah. That's for water and wastewater grades.
Do they drive their own vehicle, or?
If a city one is available, we let, they do drive the city car, the city Explorer.
Thank you.
Okay. So all in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Next item, we have the ordinance 403, 405. This is amending the code of ordinance, Chapter 165, Article 4, Section 2, to change official zoning map for the property, certain property. This is the first reading of the ordinance.
I'll take it from here. So we talked about this at the council workshop, and this has, this started as a McSweeney request for rezoning on this, what you see as the blue area, which was light industrial. And years ago, this was all light industrial. A number of years ago, this got changed to restricted industrial, commercial, and then this was left as light industrial. McSweenes, when they wanted to sell the property, they wished for consideration of rezoning, and so that's how this got started, with that request. It went to planning and zoning, they approved of it, and so what the legal description describes is this chunk here will also be, we're going to turn this from light industrial, and then this chunk here on their property line, from R2 to AT, arterial transitional. And then also in addition, this little bump out, which is part of this acreage property. So that's going to be arterial transitional as well. So after this ordinance is approved, this will all have kind of that light brown shade right here, including the road and Highway 65, because the zoning districts go to the center of the roads. This will have to have a public hearing, so I would recommend that if the council's in favor of approving the first reading, we approve the first reading, and then we'll have a public hearing at the next council meeting, I think is on the 10th. We'll advertise in advance of that for a public hearing on this matter.
Now, do we have to have three readings of it, then?
Typically, three readings of an ordinance. And in this case, since we're having a public hearing, we're going to probably end up doing three, yeah.
Well, we could do just two.
You could waive the last one at the next meeting. It's possible, sure.
What are the businesses, like the lumberyard and the other light-colored stuff, what are they zoned at?
That's AT. That's the light brown.
Okay. That's like part of Dollar Fresh.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Which is a mixed commercial and residential use, runs up the corridor and then along Highway 3 as well.
Some of that farm ground, why is that zoned residential?
Well, it's because, yeah, a lot of the eastern side is R1, which is single-family dwelling for future development. Yeah, it doesn't, there's a lot of ag land that's zoned residential.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the zoning? If not, we would take, entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance 405.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer. Second by Ms. Greifey. And again, we'll have the public hearing on our next meeting, so that we cover that as well. So, all in favor, I'm sorry, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Aye.
All right, resolution.
Mr. Holstrom.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're not on my sheet. So, anyway. Aye? All right, thank you. We'll get you added. All right, so, resolution is approved.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
First reading.
Next item is the consent agenda, and that would include approving the previous minutes as drafted from the Thursday, March 13, 2025, regular session, setting schedule the next regular session for Thursday, April 10, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers, and canceling the April 7, 2025 workshop. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
This by Ms. Greifey. Second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to our staff reports. Chief Morrison.
Yes, last night, we had the Police Citizens Academy at Ellsworth Community College, where we did shooting simulations with all the participants. It gave them a real feel for a shooting scenario and stressful situations. I think everybody really enjoyed their time. It was great to get with them. We had even some of the Iowa Falls officers came, and so we really enjoyed their presence, too. We do have graduation will be on the next regular council. I think that's April 10, if I looked at it right. So we'll look forward to their graduation at that meeting. We have new officer testing on April 5. We invited eight applicants, and we're hoping they all show up, and we hope to have somebody hired by mid-May. We're hoping to get somebody out of that group of individuals. That testing will consist of physical agility, written test, and interview, and we'll try to get all that done in that same Saturday. So we do have a couple that can't make it that day, so we're going to do kind of a two-weekend split, but for the most part, it should be done on April 5. We are also looking forward to getting someone hired, because call volume starts to pick up with the nice weather, and so. with the nice weather and so things are starting to get a little busier. People are coming out of hibernation, starting to get active. So it's nice to see the parks are filling up, but it creates more business for us. So hoping to get someone hired. And then we have citywide cleanup coming up. We've got the flyers they got to us today, and so we're starting to hand those out with any nuisances we are getting in. We're not sending them out, all of them, because it does have the April dates on there and we don't want these nuisances waiting till the end of April, beginning of May. So we are kind of selective on that part. But, and then we have the speed trailer, we got that up and going, and that should be out on the road here soon with the nice weather. So that's all I've got.
Any questions, Mr. Lamos?
For the police interviews, does Halsney help you with that or Ron or?
Halsney will sit in on the interviews with me.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Morrison? I will say that I was part of the academy this time and I, and I really enjoyed that. But there's a reason I'm not a police officer, so judging by the shooting we did last night. So.
Yeah, it was a fun experience for everybody. We didn't lose a day this year because of the weather. And again, we try to improve on it every year. So what worked well, we'll do again. What didn't work well, we'll switch it up for next year. So something different every year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Quick heads up, we talked Monday night, actually during our meeting, the fire department did a, a training fire at that 25 Sixth Street Southwest. Everything went well, no injuries, no damages. A little bit of a mess there right now, of course, but we're kind of letting some things cool down. I anticipate mid to late next week sometime, we kind of want to let the stuff that's inside of there cool down a little bit, and it's supposed to rain, perfect timing for the rain. So we get that down and then staff can get in there, core out the foundations and, and get the plumbing all buttoned up the way it should be and then get a nice bare lot for somebody. One of the questions maybe we can talk about at a, at a future meeting, then too, would be there are some city sidewalks surrounding that property. They were in very poor, poor condition prior, and of course, with fire trucks and the unloader and doing some work there, those got even more destroyed. So I'll probably ask you guys maybe what we should look at doing on that. I mean temporarily, most cost effective would be to remove those, plant some grass, but then maybe have a plan that we're going to reestablish those at some point. Three twenty-one Fifth Street Southwest asbestos testing in that property was finally completed by Hawkeye Environmental yesterday, and I was advised they may have results back to us as soon as next Tuesday. Once I receive those results, then I will get RFPs out as quickly as I possibly can to asbestos abatement companies to take care of it. But in my conversation today with those folks, they didn't seem to think like there was going to be a whole bunch in this one, so that's good. That's just really beneficial for us. And then garage demo at 504 Third Street Southwest, that was completed this morning. There are still some roll-off dumpsters and I want to go back down there and dress the yard up a little bit and put some gravel down there again where we had a few ruts and things because things have been wet down there. And then of course, those dumpsters are heavy, create some issues, but the garage is gone, so that's good. County Conservation conducted a controlled burn at East Park of the native grasses today, which is part of our Creek Bank Restoration Project Maintenance Agreement that we had. You know, we, we had some pretty low interest funding or some grant or something of that nature that went towards that, and part of our agreement was to maintain that. And it was time to get those burned off. They will grow right back. It always looks worse before it gets better when you do that, but it just, it'll, it'll create for a better stand of vegetation in there, keep out the weeds and then more along the lines of that stuff that we planted, which we want growing, will come back up. So that'll be good. Let's see, we also had staff conduct some overseeding of the soccer fields today. There were some bear spots down at East Park. I know they got some of that done. As you know, we have a ton of sod that we have to fix from snow plows. We got, we have a lot of seeding work. We have stumps that we have to fill. That project got completed this morning. I think the contracted stump removals were 100% completed as of this morning. There are two ash trees left. Those ash trees will be taken down, I'm told, in, in two weeks. They had to, they're very, very large ash trees, but there's a lot of power lines going through, especially one of those, and we have to work with Mid-American. They're going to have to do a line drop. They're going to have to make sure folks have service and different things of that nature while they take that tree down. So it's kind of an orchestrated event, but there's only two remaining. They're both giants and monsters, but that's what's taken so long. So, but that'll be completed here, not next week, but the following week, I'm told is when it's scheduled for. Let's see here, new burn site projects moving forward, water plant project you heard this morning or heard about earlier in this meeting, it was moving forward. Spring flushing, the water distribution system is scheduled to begin on Monday, so that's going to be going on. Hampton Board of Adjustment has a meeting scheduled for April 1st, 2025, as we received a conditional use permit for a property and, and the Board of Adjustment will be hearing that application on that day. And I think that's it, I'm sorry. But anyway, I'll take questions or concerns. We have a few irons in the fire.
You're saying all the ash trees in town are, are finished?
No, no, that's not at all.
Just this year?
Yeah, just this year.
Okay, so.
We're getting close.
How many do you think are left?
I don't know because I have to get with Nate on how many he's taken out this year. It wasn't as many as last year. Last year we had over a hundred. This year we're probably pushing that thirty, forty is all, just because of the way the weather and then other projects that were going on. So I'll get with Nate and try to get you a hard number.
Are there ash trees left in the cemetery?
Oh, absolutely. So the cemetery project, that's another thing to report on too. That portion of the project, phase one's done. That was completed last week. And so, yeah, there's going to still be a handful. There's like roughly approximately thirty-some up in the main part of the cemetery, but some of those are going to be very, very intricate on how they're going to do that. I think they're probably going to need to bring a crane in for some of those because they're very tall and very, just very unique, you know, and then a very tight area because they can't just drop things because of fear of damaging stones. We just want to be very cautious and methodical on how that gets done, but that'll be going out for bid hopefully in August, September sometime.
Do you have a plan to burn more houses this year?
Absolutely. I think we're looking at the three twenty-one Fifth Street Southwest. That's the one that we're currently working on the asbestos. We're in court right now and having proceedings conducted for, oh gosh, the big white house south of, of the Methodist Church, basically on First Avenue Northeast.
One twenty-one.
Two twenty-one.
One twenty-one.
Yeah, First Avenue Northeast. So those for sure. And then I'm hoping after July 1st, we can get after two or three more. We still have some in the pipeline.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tar?
Now, if I live next door to that big white house, South and Methodist Church, how would I go about telling somebody, I don't want that burned because you're going to affect my house?
I think that's maybe having a conversation with the fire department. You know, the, the cost burning versus demolition is two different things, but if someone has a viable concern, they can have a conversation with the chief of police, we can all get involved. The water curtain that they utilize, the chief of, or the fire chief, I'm sorry, the fire chief can explain how that works and it might persuade that, hey, yeah, there's probably not as much risk as I think there is, but if they do have a concern, we want to hear about it. Most definitely.
Yeah, they just remodeled that house next to it and I hate to have paint all blistered up on the side of it or whatever and.
Absolutely. And I think having that conversation with the fire chief and maybe, maybe he'll agree. Maybe he'll say, yeah, it is pretty close. Maybe we should do this other method.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tar? I hearing any?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn.
I just want to thank all the candidates that stepped up to be considered for the Ward three appointment and welcome to Bill. Congratulations on your appointment. I'd like to speak with you after the meeting so we can set up the time to get together and take care of some housekeeping things. And I don't know, did Mark or Doug mention the siren test this morning?
No.
Okay, so no, there was a siren test that the county did and then our, our sirens as well, and they were all working as they should, so that's good. No update on the pharmacy, other than what I previously reported, we're waiting for plans and specs from the consultant on asbestos testing. Any questions?
Mr. Lamos?
When we do our meetings on YouTube, how long do they stay on YouTube?
We don't have a deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunn? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Move to the council reports. Mr. Davies?
I just want to thank all the candidates again and congratulate Bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hodge?
I want to thank the candidates too. Congratulations, Bill. I don't know for sure. I have some things going on in my life. I'm not sure just exactly. I've talked to the mayor, I've briefly talked to Ron as to what my own future is being on the city council. Let's put it this way, time will tell. That's all I have at the moment.
All right, thank you. Ms. Greifey?
Thank you, candidates. We're jumping in volunteering, that's wonderful. Welcome, Bill. Just since our last council meeting, I just wanted to share a few things that have been happening. We had a very successful Latino pop-up market. It was fantastic. They were so excited about it, they want to do it again, so we're having another one April 19th. Very excited about our annual chamber celebration. It was fantastic. Very proud of the work that we did with that. A little questionable about the city hall team. It was fun, wasn't it? You guys did great. I did attend a Real Money Real World class at the high school this past Monday, and that was a lot of fun. They, we had different stations. The kids came in with a scenario, this is your life, you make this much money, you're married, you have three kids, now go to each station and figure out what your budget is. I can't, it's an eye-opener for kids. I had kids that their scenario, they had three kids in the first, and I had the entertainment station. That was their beeline. They went to the entertainment station and you look down through their papers and, okay, you've got three kids, I don't see any daycare in your budget here, and how about housing? And why don't you go take care of that stuff and then come back and see me? But it was a lot of fun. Today, at the shop, I had the ladies from Iowa Falls that do the gourmet cupcakes and gourmet chocolates. Their products were a hit. They sold out of the cupcakes. I am hoping to get them located in Hampton. We're working it, working it, working it. So those talks are continuing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yep, just want to say congratulations to Bill. There's now two Bill Hs on the council. Of course, there's only one Bill Hodge, but we have two Bill Hs now. The neat thing about this whole process this time was we had the magic of YouTube. Over 600 people watched those interviews, and I've never had more interest in people reaching out to me of who they wanted for their next city council person, and it's mostly people from Ward three that reached out. And I had people that wanted Bill and all the other candidates too. I had votes or suggestions from, for every candidate, and that is just great. That just tells me there was no weak candidate or there, everybody had a positive, and that's just fantastic. So, you know, like I said, over 600 people watched that on YouTube and according to Bill, I guess we need to smile more.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lamos?
I'd like to thank all the candidates for interest in the Ward three and see that's, I've been in that position and it's stressful and hopefully we can all work for the better of Hampton. I'd like to talk to you after the meeting, Doug. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bill, would you like to make, say a few words tonight?
Yes, I would. First, I would like to thank the mayor and the council for this honor of representing Ward three. And I most importantly, want to thank the fellow candidates that went through this process with me. It's no fun to do something like this alone and it was great to have you by, by our side together to go through this process. I don't know, I, I should tell you a little secret. Is that I doubt if, I doubt if you realize that I pray for you guys every night, that not only at the local level, but the state and federal leaders that we have. And I always ask and I always pray that wisdom will be provided to the leaders and that all of their decisions will be pleasing in God's sight. And I guess I'm asking you to and the citizens of Ward three to pray for me too, that any decisions that I make are the right decisions and they're, they're good for the citizens of Hampton and Ward three. So thank you.
All right, thank you and welcome. For the mayor report, we did write out a few things. Number one, Bill, thank you and welcome to the, to the seat. And again, for all the applicants, I think y'all did a great job. Again, like we can only do one at this point, so thank you. Next item is the, if I was just going to touch on the police academy that we went through and the shooting last night, and like I said, there's a reason I'm not a police officer, so we're safe. We got a great police department taking care of us, so. Next item here is just the reminding on the combo, compo site. I try to get that out every year, you know, it's, there's a flyer, this is just flyers out, out front, if anybody needs it. I'm not, if anybody knew this or some people didn't, that this is available to non-residents of Hampton as well, for a fee. So people can, can use that as well as a small revenue, revenue stream for us, so. But it's time to clean up our yards. I was going to rake today, decided not to, so I got all day tomorrow and then I got Saturday and Sunday and Monday, and so, so it'll get done eventually. I did want to mention, you know, we've got Bill in the ward seat freed, or three seat. There is an election coming up. We will have four council seats up for pre-election in November of this year, as well as the mayor's seat. So, so if anybody else has any, you know, aspirations to serve on the, on the council, I welcome everybody, you know, get your names in and I believe I wrote down the number, I think, I don't have the dates right in front of me, but sometime mid, mid to late August is when you can pick up your nomination papers. And then I think September 18th is when they have to be in, so. So it's coming up and everybody's, everybody welcome to throw your hat in the, in the ring.
When is Bill's out?
He'll have to run in November, the first, for election, yeah. Yep, so that's, that's the fourth one and then we got three others open on this one. Yeah. And I did one thing, I just made a note here, and when I got into city, city government, if you have aspirations to do that, I just remind everybody, run to, for a reason, you know. If you want to, if you want to be part of the city council, be there because you want to be there and you want to help for the city, but, but run for a reason. It brings me to a little quote I found, and I love quotes, but this one, you know, you know, the positive thing that I like. This one really kind of hit home. It says, six-year-old people, six-year-old kids laugh in an average of 300 times a day. Adults only last 15. only last fifteen to one hundred times a day. So my, my message is, let's be, let's be six again. Be six. Laugh. It feels good, and it's good for you. Last thing I got is spring has sprung. It's time, it's time to clean things up. Watch for motorcycles and pedestrians. I don't know if, we got our progress park is lit up. All the lights are working. It looks great, and the kids are using the park, and that's what I like. So watch for them down there. Watch them all, all over town, but especially there, because there was, there's been a bunch, a bunch of them out in the last couple of weeks. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Most by Mr. Greif, Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good, safe weekend, kids.